Accept all our rights. You guys are conscientious and we have to go along with the budget. So that we don't waste much time, much of our time. We start in case when one side is not here and the other side is around. We cannot go in time case, there is better for us.
The first case is, is what you guys services. That is, that is what you guys services. Yeah, yeah, I'm a musician from Africa, but I can't do like music, but it's good to be in the rock band. And order the, of this commission. Uh, what is here? Uh, what is here? It's a, it's here. I see this. This is the petition here. What of, uh, Abu T, Abu T, Abu T? The first, uh, I just, I'm not, the first one, uh, not. In the second case is the, Abu T, Abu T, on behalf of Mr. Joseph, he wants to have on basis, Nigerian council for our, our. Is this? Act, act present. The petitioner present. Now, there is a question for our, in part of here. I'm not careful, is that so?
The petition on the road. But they have a response.
And the instance as far as you are concerned, as far as everybody now gets concerned, took place on the day of July, on Thursday, July 29th. When they are not amended, they are not saying that it is not like it.
Yes, yes.
So you see, so what do you think?
If, what I'm saying, if they have a right, they have a right to respond.
Mister Chairman, I think you should go ahead and amend whatever he wants to amend. It is his case. He knows how best he can handle his case. We don't have any objection.
Okay, it should be recorded that they agreed for the amendment made by the petition. At least we are now moving.
That's correct. Presentation by the EK Progressives Forum during the designated public hearing organized. The date, it was supposed to be organized, not longer than that, because they did what gave it organized today. Being, um, twenty eighth day of February, twenty twenty four. By the Senate Committee on Ethics, Privileges and Public Petitions. On the unwarranted killings and attack on EK neighborhood watch. Guards by men of the Nigerian army in EK Hoodi Local Government Area of Enu State. On behalf of EK Progressives Forum and the entire people of EK in the local government of Enu State. We thank immensely the Senate Committee. The Senate President. Senator of Federal Republic of Nigeria and this committee for averting us the opportunity to vent the grief and anguish of the people of EK over the attack on the EK neighborhood guards. And the killing of one of them and the wife of one of them. This shows that this Senate is listening, is a listening one. And is very ready to hear and address the cries of the people they represent. May the good Lord continue to guide and direct you all. EK Progressives Forum is the umbrella body of EK individuals. Men and female, both at home and abroad, aim at mobilizing for all round development of EK community in areas of educational development, social development, security, et cetera. Given the unfavorable security situation around the community. With innocent kidnaps within and around the community. The forum geared into the Enu State Neighborhood Watch Program. By mobilizing resources to support and strengthen the EK Neighborhood Watch Group's for gas. Note that the Watch Group is registered under the Enu State Neighborhood Association and Watch Group Law 2006. As part of the efforts of the, to support and strengthen the Neighborhood Watch Group's for gas. EK Progressives Forum placed them on monthly salary. Bought motorcycles, uniforms, raincoats and other necessities for them. The forum also provided identificands for them and a patrol vehicle. Gruesome and unwarranted attacks of modern. On Thursday, the twenty ninth day of June, twenty twenty three. Some of the guards of EK Neighborhood Watch Group went to Nightmare to attend the inauguration of another Neighborhood Watch Group. No, no, this is the June, this is the correct date in our presentation now.
You said that when you were making this, why often would you teach? Not this one.
It is the presentation that, I thought the petition who wrote initially wanted to correct, the presentation carries the correct date, yes. Went to Nightmare to attend the inauguration of another Neighborhood Watch Group at Nightmare. Around six P M. While there we are still at Nightmare, they received a distress call that some hoodlums blocked the road leading to EK from the Nigerian boroughs, popularly called Amman. Located between Amekembo and EK. On getting the call, the chief security officer, C S O of the guards, Mister Ernest Adikam, who attended the inauguration.
I did not submit a person. I submitted through the Asan Office.
Because the problem we have is that there is supposed to be reference of all these. So that just like the whole time we make the presentation, it has made the presentation based on what you have presented. And now, if we allow you those to make a core representation. We are not very sure that I look, that you can, you can watch for what you have seen. Anytime you can see, oh, this is not what I meant. Oh, this is not what I said. And you can change it, but it's better when it is there, it lies. And you see the predicament we are having is that these people are coming from far away. Now if we are joined to give your presentation, you can do at their own access.
Mister Chairman, I'm not seeking to make an oral presentation. The one that will happen is that I failed to collect the acknowledgement from the Asan Office. If we can stand down, I'll just move there and collect acknowledgement. I have my own company here. It's not an oral submission, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we, we give you fifty minutes. To go and get some documents, please. Thank you very much.
I will discuss. Or, I don't know, she still sit down here while the next one goes.
Because in the last meeting, as I said, you have also asked us to start in a way. And we, uh, we, 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 and we start, we start having the acknowledgement of where we started. We should have done so, so we started to, uh, do it. They are, uh, they are, uh, president, they are, they are not, they are not, they are not.
That is what you are trying to say. But as far as your boss, he say justice. They want justice. And it is for us now to see where the justice is. So that we can apply justice. We cannot say because they are bleeding, not carrying this. We can go extra mile, we can decide to say we are going to the law office, to meet the law office, and see for ourselves what happened there. With the team of I, I me, and then the... So, the only thing I can allow now is for you to say you want this presentation that they have made with the exhibits given to you so that you can go ahead for other studies and then possibly make for the submission. So that we don't deny what we are right to make submissions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have any problem with the exhibits. We just made our presentation and we are ready to go on, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this includes members, as we were saying, Mr. Chairman, the incident that happened on 29th June 2023 was an unfortunate incident. However, it was not the way the petitioner presented it. When this matter took place, the military hierarchy took their time to conduct investigation on the circumstances and other things that transpired at the course of that incident. And it was discovered that on that dreadful day that there was an allegation, there was the commuter driver who had passed by the roads, saw the military men in uniform and informed them of the incident that is happening on the roads and the need for them to intervene. And immediately, in half way and based on our training, they moved to the sea. Unfortunately to them, unfortunately to AK level groups, who, because what transpired was a case of a lack of communication, lack of synergy and coordination in that incident. Because AK level group, who knows that the military operates and have a checkpoint within the general area, never communicated the military that they are going to the same sea. Meanwhile, the passenger also informed AK level group that there is a robbery incident that is also going on at that same place. So they moved at their own timing. The military were also informed by the commuter drivers, who also moved at a different timing and they met around 19:00 hours. They met. However, AK level group were helped to arrive and they hit in the bush. When they hit in the bush, the two had to be saved. They hit in the bush and immediately, they are standing by the boat. They never noticed that the AK level group were within that general area. While they were, they tried to observe what was happening. There was a gunshot and the man got arrested and exchanged fire.
What was the problem?
After the shock of that exchange of gunfire, men of level group were killed in the course of that action. And it is our position that AK level group members, who were in that scene even before the military men arrived, know that the military, they go with their helos, they pack with their lights out. So they knew, and it is expected, because there have been a synergy between the police, AK level group and the military, even before the incident took place. They have always cooperated. It was on that day that there was no communication between the AK level group, police and the military. And it is expected that then who are waiting in the sea, who notice the presence of the military, is expected to draw their attention on the military that, see, we are here, but that was the matter. It was on the course of events of this fire, towards the end of it, that the military discovered that, oh, the people who are exchanging fire are hurt, sisterages. And that's at that moment, that is how it happened. It is very unfortunate to say this because militaries are not enemy to the society. We cannot just go into a community and start exchanging fire. We see that this man is a skilled worker, just like the petitioner party at the... Just sympathy. He said it was a close range and he now saw him and fired at him. And he said, "They're not here for you people." So why should a military man that is well trained see you, identify you and look at you and start firing you? I think it is far from the truth. There are something we are not getting to ask you. These things we are probably investigated. We don't have problem with AK level group. We don't have problem with the police. Why should this type of allegation be made against our men? It is not true and it is not fair. It is best of this that we are saying that the cost of this blow and blow is lack of synergy, coordination and coordination and nothing of that. In our military policy application, it was stated, I want to believe that any further investigation for many of these, we see point, it's a fact. There is nothing needed with all the reference. So if you have this, Mr. Chairman, and the disengaged members of this committee, we also invite this committee to look at section 239 of the Armed Forces Act, which provides for indemnity for action in aid to civil authorities. It is an enactment from this national assembly, looking at the legitimacy of sadness of the military, looking at what we pass through, decided on its wisdom to slot or to put in a clause to inspire men in the armed in a situation of dissection, Mr. Chairman. It is our position, Mr. Chairman, that the team, AK level groups, police and the military in rest of the discussion should share responsibility for lack of synergy and coordination. That is our position. And moreover, as we pondered that, we have a lengthy clause that is related from this type of incidents. And we are saying that even though it's a sad situation, an incident that took away a precious life, we agree. We sympathize with the victim. But we say that truth at all point can not be said irrespective of any particular gain that each individual want to benefit from the course of this petition. And furthermore, Mr. Chairman, from the totality of the evidence, it is very clear that the presenter of this petition of this case is not familiar. It's not familiar what transpired. Even the waste, the weapons that he was using in the course of this is a clear demonstration that he does not have a grip of what transpired in the field. Having said this, Mr. Chairman, we submit that the committee should discontinue with the petition, petition from the petitioner and advise on the need for synergy and coordination in operation of this nation. May I please, sir, go, committee, sir? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Now we have had your most sign. And the parties, representative of the petition.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and our guests, the petitioners and the petitioners. Dr. Rijo. Dean Darni.
Major.
Major.
Sir.
I have listened to your oral presentation. I've also read what the military, what the organization ruled. And I want to match with what the petitioners earlier told us. Let me find out from you, the petitioners. Has there been any friction? Any friction between the key community and the military before at this location?
Yes.
You have any history of a conflict?
Yes, yes, sir.
You were... What was the nature of the conflict between you and these people before this business?
Yes, sir. A week or like a week or so, maybe four, five days before that incident happened, the same particular spot, there were three, three victims, kidnapping victims, attacked by one, three, uh, there. At a jail, a woman and two women and one, one man. So when we rescued them, when they are, when they kidnapped them, and are we coming out, the military drove, came with their helos, the dead buried in us. Why would, why would they, why would we inform them, inform them that, when they do, we are with full passion and we are going after people that will take here, that they will, they will kill us inside bush one day. Why, why, why would, when they, that's informing them? That's, they made, uh, only they, they made, you know, we have, uh, uh, whole fashion, chasing people with AK, that they want, they will kill us inside bush. And that very day that this incident happened, they not came with helo, they came with KKK. KKK. That, that's the KKK, the, the, that's the KKK, the, the, the woman that was shot. That KKK was what they used to target, woman. I was with, so, I was telling, we, we are, we are level group, level group, through the ways to work together, we used to come to bush together. What we were, and we used to have, this thing with them. All of a sudden, they started changing.
And Major. I want to also find out from you.
Okay.
Were you at that spot where this things happen? Or you only resulted, the military asked, the lawyer, were you around at the scene of the incident?
If I was at the scene of the incident.
Yeah.
Uh, this inclusion, I thought, I was not at the scene of the incident, but I have full military reports, investigation reports on what happened. I have full military police investigation reports. The team of police staff where the incident happened, sent team of military police to conduct investigation concerning what happened. They have the full reports. They have read through over and over and I can speak authoritatively on what transpired.
Sorry, Chairman, last comment on this. Uh, when this incident happened, then two people were killed. Did the military go to AK progressive to commiserate with them, over the loss of their members, before the mother was brought to the center? Was there any contact between the military and the people that loved their loved ones?
Sir, I will not be in a better position to speak on that, but I know definitely the way. Definitely the way. But I cannot speak on that because I don't have the information.
From you, yeah, can I? Has there been any, any connection between you two?
None, 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 none of us knows, none has ever happened, none. The only interaction we have was one of us, when we let them connect, I tell them who was the military police, who came to the motorway to just confirm that those bodies were still there. That's all we have from them. None of them has come for, to commiserate us. And then, just let me use up, if you only say, just like I said, sorry, that the TSS has information about this.
Nobody deny, nobody deny the coherence of this event. Even the military, you can say.
What?
They just say that they came with helo, they didn't come with helo, they came with KKK. But that is no issue, sorry, sir. When they check the way of this or not, the important thing is that the military have already accepted that here they came to work. They don't deny that, the, the, the road, they are saying, the only problem is that they really know that they create, uh, the level group, where are they vicinity. That's the only window or the figure where they are coming. So I wanted to find out if actually there is a sign of some kind of interaction before and after. So that we can say whether it was an accident or it was a deliberate development. That's why I asked, what was different with these people and what happened? They are like that. So that we have, we are all in mind, we can, we can read papers, we will analyze the thing. So from what I hear, it's very clear that there is a issue of conflict. So we will not say everything here. There is a issue of conflict. And there is also a problem of someone trying to... Your hand is off.
This includes members of this one, this committee. I want to speak based on the issue of alleged conflict. The, what the petitioner observed to my men does not appear as if there is conflict. Because he says that the military were warning them to be wary, to be wary on how they go about watching armors in AK-47 with some action. I don't see it as conflict. And they say, always, let us know which is what played out in this case. Because if AK level group have notified the military, they would have known that their sister agency is also within. You see the same thing that plays out. Coordination, lack of coordination, synergy. That is what we are saying. This thing happened, it's not a crisis, it's not a conflict. That's why I see this.
The program I have to, have to soldier, first have, they kidnapped our brother and they call it China. See soldier, see the place they kidnapped our brother. The military soldiers, as they, our brothers, we are here, they kidnapped our brother. They told us, still when they told us, said, "That place look about to be in the bush." It's not about to be. But the place where this thing happened, almost as two boats. Soldier leave the place where they came. So that soldier, they came before we came. Start when we came, soldier, all the fair, fair, we back on our operations. To most. It is soldier know that you were there. No, we don't know that soldier is there, they trust us. We don't know. We didn't know that soldier, soldier. Soldier, soldier don't know that we are there. Start when we came. We can, we can, we can, start when we came there. Uh, don't have most, two hundred, uh, in every judge.
So what do I mean, you were in the bush when the soldiers came?
No, soldier there, before we came. They are not in the bush.
Who first came to this?
Soldiers, soldiers, they, they, they are playing number. In uniform, the other guy don't wear uniform, the other soldier don't wear uniform, you guys see that? Don't have one, we are in uniform.
So at what point, the soldiers now shoot?
Yeah, the point.
At what point? At what point, what I'm saying is that.
Broken that, uh... Start when you reached there. They already reach here for that, uh, who they saw. Because no road, everywhere to the broken. Use a red, run from that plate, run from here, like that gate. We reach there, we don't see anything like roadblock.
And now, imagine this, are you aware, is anybody inform you that there was? I can't remember.
I have post photos. They are colors before, say, see, they were there. They have, they are about that, or did you like mine? People tell us, they go, say, they go.
Well, did you ask me to go?
Yes.
Suppose they come, so that they practice, when you get, did you? Like a crisis, or there is a hamro before.
You are asking, yes, yes, sir.
Then you people first go before the army. Are you, are you people out?
I was, but you have the chance.
I am, please tell me, are you, are you out? Hamper.
Hamper, sir. That's hamper.
So I think, uh... You can sit there. You can sit there, or do you have any other things to say?
Let me assist you.
You have other things?
Yes. Yes, I let me assist you, sir, please, sir. Even, even when we came up here, even they cited us, one of them said, "We know, we know that you was born." One of the soldiers said, "We know that you, you were born." He made me cite it us, he said, "I hope this, I hope you fight." I was in one shouting, level group, level, uh, level AK which I too. When before, before I went to one of my, um, that was already died. And I heard, this is my, my story. Both to hand. I was shouting, level group, level group, the one in, uh, camo trousers and this is the inner person. Now I hope you fight. They want to say that we, we know that you were born. Before, and I entered, I took up, enter bush.
You know them before?
Just like, I, we normally used to work with them, force, we worked, worked with them, uh, both police. The military used to enter bush, run this operation, show your force. Work, work together. The, 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 the time, the, 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 this thing I read, the, 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 the weather is not too right. But you can, you can cite them, even the KKK, they came, that they came, that they came with KKK. They used, that they came to carry the woman to hospital, that, that one that was shot. That's the KKK, they had came, and the KKK that was, they came to the hospital.
Who do you imagine?
The KKK man, that the soldiers and the KKK, they, they carried goods inside together, two teams, like the KKK came.
The soldiers took you, what?
The soldiers carried the inside, soldiers, that's the soldiers that.
Soldiers, that is soldiers that...